Hi, I'm Patrice Granatoski and I'm seeking reelection to the Town Council. It has been an honor to work for the people of Groton these past two years as a member of council and to serve as mayor of the town. A little bit about me, I'm a wife, a mom of two, and a civics teacher at Grasso Tech, where I'm a member of AFT Connecticut and where I started the Interact Service Club affiliated with the Groton Rotary. I see myself as a public servant in my career choice and in my decision to serve the community. So why should you vote for me on November 5th? My previous service, including on the RTM as Finance Chair, the fact that I was a member of the Charter Revision Commission. I have experience with town and Board of Ed operations and budgets. That makes it possible for efficient, careful review. I work to restore trust between the Town Council, the Board of Ed, and subdivisions with the goal of improving communications and working cooperatively and respectfully. During the past two years, we have accomplished much. We rescued state funding for the Groton School Building Project. We moved the town to the State Police Radio Network, saving millions while improving safety for our peace officers and our citizens, a win-win situation. We restored community policing. We established an ethics ordinance and ethics commission. And we delivered budgets maintaining services and stabilizing the tax rate. I have been and will continue to be an advocate for smart growth and for the environment. I was the driving force behind the establishment of the Resilience and Sustainability Task Force. I am also seeking safer alternatives to glyphosate use, and I'm pushing for solar for the new school buildings. I asked for and delivered a policy for when schools come offline. Working with stakeholders, we now have a process in place to have quicker turnover, maintenance of the unused school property, and better communication between the Board of Ed and town. While I'm proud of all that has been accomplished, there is still work to be done. Work on resilience and sustainability was allowed to lapse for far too many years. We are behind and must pick up the pace and get to work on preparing Groton for the coming changes. We need to bring smart growth to town, preserving our green spaces and redeveloping our existing developed sites. We must continue to support our children in our schools, ensuring access to excellent education for all Groton's kids because every child can learn. And I will work to maintain our fiscal responsibility, all while not jeopardizing our quality of life. Progress will only result from all of us working together, from listening, finding common ground, and through hard work. All of Groton working together, growing Groton together. I'm Patrice Granatoski and I ask for your support on November 5th. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Eric Osman, and I'm running for Groton Town Council on the Republican slate. I've lived in Groton since 2008, and I married my wife, Michelle, in 2015. As an IT coordinator for Essex Savings Bank, I can offer my skillset analysis when it comes to improving the technical infrastructure for the town of Groton. I believe that any technical improvements that are made can be done cost efficiently. I am running for Town Council because I believe in the people over politics. With a nation that is so divided right now regarding political views, I believe it has trickled into everyone's mindset. As a candidate for council, I believe that it's important that we find common ground and find ways to work together no matter what side of the political spectrum and looking out for the best interest of our community. The Groton Republican Town Council Slate is dedicated for putting people over politics. It has become all too common for elected officials to put partisan interests before the needs of our neighbors. This cannot be allowed at the local level. Each of our candidates is committed to being independent leaders and voices, and I understand that it takes everyone to build up a community. Unity through diversity strengthens our community. The Groton Republican team will restore fiscal responsibility to our Groton's town operations, focusing on sustainability solutions that will promote financial health and stability as opposed to one-off fixes that don't improve our fiscal position. We can do this by prioritizing business development, decreasing town expenses, and also getting ahead of debt payments. The Groton Republican Slate wants to emphasize Groton's unique position in history and elevate our town as a hub for the southeastern part of Connecticut. I believe in strong economic development. Please be sure to reach out if you have any questions. The Groton Republicans are completely dedicated to responding to our community, and remember to vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leanne Aubrey, for those of you that I have not met. I've been giving much thought about what people want to know when a person is running for office. Do you really care that I moved here in 1964? Came and went until 1974? When I chose Groton for my children's permanent home? As you can guess, I was a Navy wife. My children, three boys, were in neighborhood schools. So being involved came naturally with scouts, sports, and special projects. Whatever it was, I was there. I began a new career in real estate and started to learn so much more about my adopted hometown. My interests were growing. I had the opportunity to step into the RTM to replace Representative Betsy Gibson, my mentor for many years. I loved being there. I felt I was giving back to Groton. I met many wonderful people in both parties and learned so much. When I was asked two years ago if I would run for the Town Council, I felt I was ready. In my role as a real estate broker, I met many Groton residents, and I had some thoughts on how Groton could grow. Our planning and economic development departments are stars. I was thrilled to be part of putting more funds into their budgets, and it has paid back so very much. In the next few years, our grand list will continue to grow with many new projects. That is but only a few things that I get excited about. I would love the opportunity to continue the work that the council is dedicated to. Some of my special projects were ensuring proper review of retirement payments for town employees. Also important to me is the refurbishing of the front of the par four clubhouse at the town golf course, and working towards great new schools after correcting land ownership for the new middle school. If you have any questions concerning Groton, please feel free to contact me. If you feel I've done my job as a counselor, please vote for me on November 5th. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you, and I will be there for you, given the chance. Bye now.
Hi, I'm Jen White, candidate for Groton Town Council under Republican slate. I'm running for council to support business growth and maintain taxes. Groton is a diverse community. We are a melting pot of individuals that respect one another. I want to ensure that it stays that way. Stop the labeling, listen, learn, and make your own decision. Anyway, are you tired of driving down Route 1 in Thane Street just to see vacant space? Are you tired of surrounding towns growing while Groton lags behind? We need businesses to invest in Groton. As a town, we should invest in Groton. As a large defense employer continues to hire and build, Groton should support businesses that feed into its supplier base, like a mini Silicon Valley. We should also support recreation businesses to bring in tourists. We may not have Costcos, but what's not to say that we can't pursue Trader Joe's, L.L. Bean, and mixed space developments? Why can't we have a Garden City Center like Cranston, Rhode Island, or Blueback Square? If these ideas aren't feasible, then let's look at other ideas. If we don't do anything, change will eventually change us, and it won't be at our bidding. We have to be progressive. If elected, I would continue to push for transparency as to where our development team anticipates future investments. Remember, it's our obligation to look for opportunities to increase the revenue base or reduce costs to keep taxes flat. As for cost reductions, I promise to review the annual budgets submitted, ask tough questions, and even make tougher recommendations. I won't just pass the buck to the RTM to review and solve. Please note, we can't artificially keep taxes flat by using the rainy day fund. Eventually, there will be no funds to access. Taxes would eventually be raised without a plan to get spending in line. Think about that. No savings leads to higher borrowing costs and increased taxes. Besides finances, we need to continue to offer great services to our seniors, our children, and provide our families a safe place to live. Being on the Town Council, I will look at the entire picture. As a counselor, I will ensure that citizens will be respected and heard. I promise to review all facts and understand the impacts and proposals before making a decision. I will be your representative and advocate. During this election, you'll have the right to cast nine votes for Town Council. I'm asking for one of your votes. Groton residents deserve an inclusive and diverse council. Counselors should bring different skillsets and perspectives when working with the town manager, town hall staff, town commissions, and the community at large. Thank you for your time, and please vote for me, Jen White, slot 7B, on Tuesday, November 5th. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Joe Sapiri, and I'm running for reelection to the Groton Town Council. You elected me to serve on the council two years ago, and I'm completing my first term this year. Two years ago, I told you that the town must provide excellent schools, clean and safe drinking water, good streets and roads, sewer, police, and fire services, libraries, parks, and recreation facilities, and a senior center. And I told you that we would have to pay what it costs to maintain those services for you. However, I also said that we should spend no more of your tax money than necessary to provide those services at a high level. I'm the same man running for reelection. That's what I stand for, and that's what I continue to strive to accomplish. Taxes have risen more rapidly than the increase in property values over the last four decades. Everyone in the town is affected by the steadily rising taxes. If you own property, you feel those increases directly. If you rent, the landlord must factor in the taxes that he or she must pay on the home that you rent, and charge you more to cover those taxes. When you purchase goods and services, the merchants and professionals must factor in the taxes that they must pay into the prices that they charge you for those goods and services. It is important for those in government to appreciate that when Town Council spends money, the finance department must increase taxes to cover those expenditures. That means we take money away from our citizens, and when we take your money, we take some of your freedom from you. It is difficult to imagine any choices that you may wish to make that don't cost money, be it vacations, food choices, clothing, housing, education, sports, charitable giving, or simple travel into town. During my two years on the council, I have repeatedly reminded fellow counselors of our duty to control spending so as to keep taxes as low as possible. I have also supported expenditures for things and services the town needs to provide the people. So there are no increases in the tax mill rate this year. At the same time, we have started construction of three new schools. We have reserved additional land for open spaces. We have enacted a tax incentive program to promote investments in Groton while enhancing our tax base. We have begun converting unused town property to privately held businesses and housing that also will enhance our tax base. We have enacted an ethics ordinance and created an ethics commission to enforce the ordinance. I hope that we can preserve the knowing school property as a park. People need open spaces where they can walk with their small children and not fear that the kids will suddenly dart out into the street. A park there would provide a serene space where seniors can relax and where kids can play an impromptu game of pickup ball or throw a frisbee. The development of the park could progress over a period of time so that only a relatively small amount of money would be expended in any given year. I would like to see the council enact a program so that seniors and disabled persons do not have to pay more than 15% of their net income for property tax on their residences. And I would like to see the entire council and all of the department heads remain aware of the fact that any spending means that we must take more from the people in taxes. We must continue to spend money to preserve excellence in education, in police and fire protection, in infrastructure, and in support of our parks and libraries. But we must be sure that we don't squander the people's money unnecessarily. I'm asking for your vote on November 5th.
My name is John Goodrich, and I am running for Town Council on the Republican ticket. I was born and raised in Mystic and lived here until I was 21, and returned home in October of 2018. And let me say, it's good to be back home. I have spent 24 years in automotive and real estate. The skillset I have acquired in this line of work will assist me in being a council member in the following ways. One, I have held every possible position in a retail environment, from the dealer side to the manufacturer side to owning my own automotive business. My point is, I have a track record of being able to quickly learn and excel in new situations. Two, both these lines of work are people-centric, and to be successful, I needed to have the ability to effectively listen and provide a product my clients were looking for. This ability to listen is very important for the position I am asking the voters of Groton to entrust me with. I'm running for Town Council because I believe in the people over the politics. As a candidate for council, I also believe that it's important that we find common ground and find a way to work together no matter what side of the political spectrum and looking out for the best interests of our community. I have managed businesses and founded and run companies. One lesson I learned early on, when one is honored and given the great responsibility to represent other people, the job of that person is to be a servant to those that they have been chosen to speak for. To make my point, let me share two quotes with you that have impacted me personally. The first from Dr. Rick Rigsby, who states, "Make sure your servant's towel is bigger than your ego." I commit to the voters of this town, my servant's towel will always be big and ready. The second is John Wooden, the basketball coach for UCLA who won multiple national titles. As great of a coach as he was, he was found sweeping his own gym floor throughout the week. Groton deserves a council that is willing to sweep the floor for the citizens of our great town. I was taught that knowledge and wisdom are gained by listening to those that are wiser than you. And I've learned that there's a very long list of people that are wiser than me, by the way. If elected to the Town Council, I will commit to listen to the citizens of this town and seek their input and advice. The Groton Town Republican Council Slate is dedicated to putting people over politics. It has become all too common for elected officials to put partisan interests before the needs of our neighbors. This cannot be allowed at the local level. Each of our candidates is committed to being independent leaders and voices and understand that it takes everybody to build up a community. Unity through diversity strengthens our community. The Groton Republican team will restore fiscal responsibility to Groton town operations, focusing on sustainable solutions that promote financial health and stability as opposed to one-off fixes that don't improve our fiscal position. We can do this by prioritizing business development, decreasing town expenses, and getting ahead of debt payments. Good government is an open government. Being committed to transparency and accountability, Groton Republicans will strive to work with everyone at the table and invite more people to be at the table. Decisions and conversations must be available for public scrutiny. We need fresh faces with new ideas to invigorate our local economy and community. We will introduce a council rule that requires minutes to be taken if three or more Town Council members are discussing town business, with some exceptions. Finally, Groton needs to have a sense of place in the world. Who are we? How do we connect with each other and to the outside world? The Groton Republican Slate wants to emphasize Groton's unique position and history and elevate our town as the hub of southeastern Connecticut. We believe that the town would benefit from having a town green, a program that incentivizes folks to spend money in town, and smart development that protects the eclectic village and suburb spaces while allowing for growth through creative urban planning. Please make sure to reach out if you have any questions. The Groton Town Republicans are completely dedicated to responding to our community. To close, I humbly ask you vote for me on November 5th.
I'm Juliette Parker. Let me tell you a bit about myself. I grew up in Paquannic Bridge and graduated from Fitch High School in 1991. I currently live in the city. I have two daughters, Denaya, who is a UConn student and works part-time, and Aleah, who is a graduating senior at New London Science and Tech, and has been selected as a recipient of Dr. Martin Luther King Scholarship. I have a bachelor's degree in legal studies, and I have worked at the City of Groton Police Department for the past 12 years. I am running for reelection for the Town Council. I was on the RTM for four years and the Town Council go on on two years. I have significant volunteer experience. My most recent ones are co-leader for Girl Scouts, the New London Talent Show, and New London Music Boosters. My family and community are very important to me. My reasons for running are to continue my commitment to the town. I want to set a standard. I want to be a role model for my children and their peers and tell them I was part of the solution. When I was young, growing up, the community looked out for each other. If a neighbor saw I was doing something wrong, they would send me home, and then my mother and grandparents would know about it before I got home. I want this to be part of the culture in our town, to preserve and restore this quality. When you show the next generation what it's like to give back to your community, we are showing our youth that we care and we will continue to do so. Please come out to vote on November 5th. Local elections are just as important as our national election. Thank you for your consideration.
Hi, my name is Lauren Gothier. My husband and I chose to start our family here in Groton because of its beautiful location, safe community, and closeness to our families. I work as a special projects manager at an oyster farm in Noink. I graduated from UConn Avery Point in 2016 with a bachelor's in maritime studies, a minor in history, and a minor in political science. I'm currently pursuing my master's of public administration with a concentration on public finance and budgeting and a certificate in nonprofit management. I expect to graduate in the spring. I'm also a volunteer with Special Olympics Mystic Ledger. I'm running for Town Council because I would like to see Groton be put on a responsible, future-focused path to sustainable growth. Ensuring that resources are used wisely, assets are protected, and citizens are engaged and feel respected will be the guiding principles should I be elected to serve my community. The Groton Republican Town Council Slate is dedicated to putting people over politics. It has become all too common for elected officials to put partisan interests before the needs of our neighbors. Indeed, recently resigned counselor David Atwater described to a reporter of the day paper that this current council is, quote, "not always promoting or thinking about what was best for the community. A lot of it was their own special wishes," end quote. The current council, under one-party rule of the Democrats, has obstructed transparency, reneged on contracts, jeopardized Groton's fiscal position, and put their party before the residents of Groton. This cannot be allowed at the local level. Each of our candidates is committed to being independent leaders and voices and understand that it takes everybody to build up a community. Our families must be protected from fiscal mismanagement in town. The current council increased the town operation spending by 6.1% in 2019 and 4.5% in 2020 without making reciprocal cuts. They used unassigned fund balance to prevent an increase in the mill rate. The current all-Democrat council will claim that your taxes were not raised. While true for this year, it's a deceptive explanation of what they did. Using unassigned fund balance, the rainy day fund, does not improve the position of the town and is an irresponsible use of town resources. It runs contrary to best management practices and can jeopardize the town's bond rating or resilience in the face of a natural disaster. Put shortly, taxes will most certainly have to be raised. The Groton Republican team will restore fiscal responsibility to Groton's town operations, focusing on sustainable solutions that promote financial health and stability as opposed to one-off fixes that don't improve our fiscal position. We can do this by prioritizing business development, decreasing town expenses, investing resources, and getting ahead on debt payments. We believe that good government is an open government. Being committed to transparency and accountability, the Groton Republicans will strive to work with everyone at the table and invite more people to the table. Decisions and conversations must be available for public scrutiny. We need fresh faces with new ideas to reinvigorate our local economy and community. One of my proposals is to introduce a council rule that severely restricts counselors' ability to caucus on an issue. In the current case of an all-Democrat-controlled council, discussions and decisions are made behind closed doors in the name of a caucus, limiting public scrutiny and resident input. Our community deserves better. Finally, Groton needs to have a sense of place in the world. Who are we? How do we connect to each other and to the outside world? The Groton Republican Slate wants to emphasize Groton's unique position in history and elevate our town to become the hub of southeastern Connecticut. We believe that the town would benefit from having a town green, a program that incentivizes folks to spend in town, and smart development that protects the eclectic village and suburb spaces while allowing for growth through creative urban planning. I'm Lauren Gothier, and I'm asking for your vote this Tuesday, November 5th. Together, we can set Groton on a path that is future-focused, fiscally responsible, and dedicated to the residents, not the political parties. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Portia Bordelon, and I'm a candidate for the Groton Town Council. I believe in government for the people, by the people. I believe in equitable, enriching, individualized education in our schools, creating dependable, sustainable, community-rooted, and environmentally responsible economic growth, and ensuring all citizens of all districts in the city and the town feel their interests are fairly represented by their local officials. I am a lifelong Groton resident, Fitch High School graduate, mother of two Groton students. I have served on the RTM for District 2 since 2017. I have demonstrated commitment in my attendance record, rigor in my engagement on a range of issues spanning from educational oversight to public land management to the demanding detail of budget reviews to the future considerations of environmental sustainability and resilience. Just recently, I've been appointed to fill the vacancy on the Town Council for the balance of this current term. I'm excited for the opportunity to bring a unique mix of creative and critical thinking to the Town Council, adding to the dynamic and diverse tapestry of this municipality. If elected, I will advocate for the actions that will grow the grand list in a smart, environmentally responsible, and socially sustainable manner. I will advocate for equitable management of resources across all districts of the town and serve as an open arbiter of any discussion regarding any of the numerous issues concerning the citizens. The Town Council is a deliberative body that serves primarily as a conduit for civil conversation amongst the citizens of this town. While it's important for a counselor to have goals and ambitions for the town, it is not essential to have a rigid agenda in mind. The most important functions for a counselor are as follows: to serve as an honest broker of information, to be frank and efficient facilitator of that civil conversation, and to engage with the public as a responsive representative of the constituents. To perform these functions at a high level, one must have the passion for the people and the value of diversity of voices and vocations that live in this town. My record on the RTM overall experience in life leading up to and through this campaign testified to the fact that these qualities resonate within me. I am excited and eager to provide positive energy to the town, to give back to the community in which I was raised, came of age, and chose to stay to start my own family. I encourage all Groton citizens to get out and vote Tuesday, November 5th, and I hope to have your support. A vote for Portia is a vote for progress. A vote for Portia is a vote for progress. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Juan Melendez. It has always troubled me that the voter turnout for town elections is always significantly lower than for national elections. This is a tragedy to me. So if you're an individual that doesn't typically come out to vote in town elections, I want to take this time to speak with you. It's true, this election is not flashy. You will not have wall-to-wall coverage on cable television about local politics. You won't be bombarded by a million commercials that end in, "I approve this message", and nothing I tweet will ever affect your retirement portfolio. But in many ways, this election is more important than the national election. This election affects your day-to-day life. The people who are chosen to sit on the Town Council make decisions every day that affect the quality of the schools your children attend. Their decisions affect the safety of your community. Their decisions affect the amount of property taxes you have to pay. So I implore you, take the time to learn about the candidates, learn their qualifications, understand what they care about, and vote for the people who will make Groton best for you. I am currently a town representative, and the rest of the Democratic Slate are incumbent town councillors. That's because, in the last town election, our Democratic team had a unanimous victory. The residents of Groton gave us a rare chance to work on our vision for the town uninhibited. And in that time, the council was able to improve the town's bond rating by doubling our rainy day fund. This allows us to borrow money for particularly expensive projects at lower interest rates, which saves you money. They opened a new community center in the former Fitch Middle School, a building that had been sitting vacant for years. They were even able to increase the funding for our schools, funding that our schools desperately needed after years of no increases to their budget. Now, that sounds very expensive, and you might think that taxes have gone up significantly to pay for it all, but you would be wrong. In fact, in this last year, we had a 0% increase in taxes. That's right, all these improvements to the town, and it didn't cost you a penny more. How was that? Well, this council has made it their mission to put economic development at the forefront, attracting businesses to our town that pay taxes and take some of the burden away from you. I am a lifelong Groton resident. I studied mathematics at the University of Connecticut. I served on the Water Pollution Control Authority for two years. I've been a town representative for two years, and I am a licensed real estate agent. You get to cast nine votes in the Town Council election. I hope they are for our Democratic team so we can continue to move our town forward. But if we do not earn your vote, I still hope you come out to vote on November 5th. It's just that important.
Hello, my name is Chase Foster. I'm 33 years old, and I'm running for Groton Town Council. I'm originally from Kentucky. I received a bachelor's degree of aerospace engineering from Auburn University and a master's from Florida State in mechanical engineering. I moved to Groton in January of 2017 to take a position at Electric Boat as an engineer. I own a home in Groton with my beautiful wife, Bree, where we share our home with our dog, Boomer, and our cat, Opie, and we hope to soon raise a family here. My education and job experience has taught me how to dive into issues, to uncover the root causes, and to develop and implement useful and successful solutions to those issues. I take pride in the things that I do and the work that I produce. And if elected, I would bring that energy, work ethic, and knowledge to good use for Groton. I'm running for Town Council because after living in many different places throughout the country, I have fallen in love with Groton. The people of this town are truly amazing, and the area is beautiful. My wife and I have experienced some difficult times after moving to Groton, when she was diagnosed at age 30 with stage 3 breast cancer. Our new community and friends rallied and supported us, and after 18 months of treatment, she is healthy. I want to give back to the community that was so supportive of us. The Groton Republican Slate is running on the principles of fiscal responsibility, encouraging long-term economic development, and open and transparent government, all of which I support. Here are a few highlights of what I would work to improve once elected. Budgeting. The Town Charter calls for an annual budget, but it does not limit the town from establishing a five-year plan. We cannot have a vision for ourselves in the future if we are only budgeting in 12-month increments. Due to Electric Boat, Groton is set to experience one of the largest economic booms in Connecticut history. We should be preparing for population growth, increasing the grand list, and incentivizing existing businesses to enable expansion while being mindful of our seniors. The roads. This has been a common complaint among constituents that I have met while knocking doors. A road survey needs to be performed in order to target and prioritize those areas most in need. Once completed, the roadwork priority list must be transparent. Lastly, transparency. The current Town Council posts videos on YouTube of their meetings, and those meeting minutes are posted online. The average Groton resident cannot be expected to review all of these. I plan to insist council business is done in public and to create an opt-in weekly email list with curated content in regards to upcoming meeting agenda items with descriptions and times for public comment. The current town website is dated and difficult to navigate. I will update the website immediately. I'd like to close with a few things I truly love about Groton. First and foremost, I love the people. Everyone in town has been friendly and welcoming since the day we moved here. Second, the area is beautiful. Groton is blessed to have such coastal access, hiking trails, open spaces, and well-maintained historic districts. There's always something to do outdoors any time of year. The town must preserve and protect these assets. And third, the history. From the Battle of Groton Heights to the launching of the first nuclear submarine, Groton has a rich history that we will carry on into the future. Finally, I'm running because I love Groton and I want to give back to the community that has embraced my family so graciously. It is important the citizens of Groton have representatives that have different viewpoints, that are not all of the same mindset, ones that are willing to listen to all citizens and actively seek input from all its residents. My name is Chase Foster, and I ask for your vote on line 6B, Tuesday, November 5th. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kenneth Richards, and I am running for Town Council because I would like to see our council be as diverse as our residents, mindful of our coastal roots, and supportive of our local economy. My husband and I chose to start our family in Groton because of its magnificent landscape, proximity to our employers, our family, and the belief that Groton welcomes all. I work as the EMS administrator for the Wesley Ambulance Corps, where I oversee operations of an emergency ambulance service. After starting at the bottom of the ladder 12 years ago, I now have 50 employees under my direction, and I administer a budget of $2.2 million. My husband, Matthew, is active military with the United States Navy. He is currently an officer candidate selectee where he is temporarily stationed at Officer Training Command Newport. Prior to this recent appointment, he was stationed at the Naval Submarine Base New London in Groton for the last nine years, serving on the USS Virginia as a sonar supervisor, and lastly, working as a logistics specialist for the weapons compound. Rounding out our little family, four years ago, we welcomed our son, Jaden, through a Department of Children and Families adoption. He currently attends public school in Groton. Sam, our greyhound, and Paddington, our golden doodle, complete our family. In our current political climate, Connecticut has become embroiled in the practice of believing you only need one party to control our decisions. This one-party system, as evidenced by chaos in Hartford, is not good for our town. We must strive for responsible spending, a sustainable budget, and avoid favoritism with our businesses. Diversity of ideas is a good thing as a veil of ignorance is the only way to predict our future. Don't forget, there are always ways to break a tie. Our current council is made of nine elected officials, all from one party, whose intent appears to be hiding our past rather than learning from it. We must have a council that engages with each other publicly at meetings, not behind closed doors. We need a council that takes time to listen to residents who bring their concerns to our meetings. Each of our candidates is committed to being an independent thinker with a common goal, a united methodology, and an understanding of what it takes to build a community. We believe that good government starts with an open government, being committed to transparency and accountability. Groton Republicans will work with everyone at the table and encourage more people to join our discussion. Council decisions and conversations must be available for public scrutiny with fresh faces bringing new ideas to our community. The current council increased town operation spending by 6.1% in 2019 and 4.5% in 2020's budget without making any reciprocal cuts. They use this unassigned fund balance to prevent an increase in the mill rate while claiming your taxes were not increased. This, of course, a deceptive explanation. Using unassigned fund balance, our rainy day fund does not improve the position of the town and is an irresponsible use of town resources. It can jeopardize the town's bond rating and diminish our resilience in the face of a natural disaster. Maintaining a healthy mill rate that stimulates business growth is essential to our community, just like stricter commitment to local businesses and a smarter development program that not only protects our history but allows for growth through creative planning. Our Republican team will restore fiscal conservatism to Groton Town's operations, focusing on sustainable budgets that promote financial health and a long-term stability. We can do this by prioritizing business development, decreasing town expenses, investing, and getting ahead on our debt payments. Also, because the state budget plays a role in our budget, our senator and state representatives are always invited to work with us as we head into financial uncertainty with the most recent state budget. I believe the phrase "work across party lines" should be retired, replaced simply "working together." My name is Ken Richards, and I see a dynamic future for us in Groton.
Hello, my name is Conrad Heed. I was elected to the Groton Town Council two years ago. I'm proud of our accomplishments, hope to serve another term and keep the momentum going. Two years ago, we picked up where the previous council left off, listened to warnings about the mayor property land swap, investigated and took immediate action in time to save all the state grant funding to build a new middle school and two new elementary schools. When this project is done, Groton will be known not for the buildings but for the programs and the children that pass through. In the process, we added several acres of open space, and I hope to do more. We promise to improve regionalization. In the past two years, we funded a major project to join the state police radio system, improving public safety, giving our police the tools to communicate and cooperate regionally and save money. For the first time in Groton history, we have a radio system that works everywhere in town, and our officers can talk to officers in neighboring towns, including Stonington. We promise to work through years of division and distrust and find solutions that everyone can live with. We have joint meetings with the city council, and many of the councillors individually attend other board and commission meetings, volunteer their time, and attend countless events and fundraisers, all for the benefit of bringing the town together. Can't tell you how often I have walked into a meeting or event and people tell me no councillor has ever attended their meeting before. That said, there has been a steep learning curve, and admittedly, not everything has been smooth, but things are getting better. Everyone's voice is being heard, and I believe the outcome has been we are all better informed and able to make better decisions. As we pursue efforts to market vacant schools and excess town properties, we need to be mindful of how to improve our community and enhance the quality of life. Some properties may be suited for commercial development, others for residential, and still others may best serve the community by contributing to open space. Last year, the council, at my urging, referred a plastics reduction study to the Conservation Commission. They accepted the challenge, researched the issues, presented to the council, hosted a public education outreach forum last month, and will now work with the town staff and council to introduce a plastics reduction ordinance that will help reduce pollution. While reducing waste is very important for the environment, it is also important because in the near future, the cost for recycling and trash disposal is projected to increase significantly. We all need to do our part and be responsible for the things we can change, not wait for either Washington or Hartford to save us. This council went on to introduce a coastal resiliency task force to guide the town and to plan and develop infrastructure investments to help Groton transition to a much warmer climate and higher sea levels. We also need to look at ways to reduce our energy usage. This needs to be a priority, and who you vote for on Tuesday, November 5th will determine if this effort continues with the same urgency. Getting along, encouraging economic development, achieving better schools, protecting the environment, improving the quality of life, and bringing Groton together for all residents is the feel-good part of this introduction. But my primary concern is the fiscal stability of the town. To ensure our continued success and prosperity, we need to watch every dollar and prioritize spending and look for efficiencies and savings. A good council team will challenge each other, have the confidence to hold our staff and each other accountable, and have the strength of character to work well together despite occasional agreements. All that said, I hope I've been clear that I'm not asking for your vote for just me. I cannot do anything here alone. Please vote for my team on Tuesday, November 5th. Together, we can do so much more. Thank you.
Hello, Groton. My name is Angela McGurk, and I'm an independent candidate endorsed by the Groton RTC. I've worked in Groton since early 2016, and I love it so much that my husband and I purchased a home in May where we live with our daughter. I'm running for Town Council because I believe that leadership is a position of service, and I want to serve the community that welcomed me with open arms. As an Army veteran and a seasoned professional, I have over 18 years of leadership experience, and I feel that my leadership experience can serve all the people of Groton because I value collaboration, diversity, and humility. I don't labor under any misconception that I'm the smartest person in the room. Instead, I'm skilled at building successful teams, listening to others, and leveraging resources effectively. The Groton Republican Town Council Slate is dedicated to putting people over politics. It has become all too common for elected officials to put partisan interests before the needs of our neighbors. This cannot be allowed at the local level. Each of our candidates is committed to being an independent leader and independent voice. We understand that it takes everybody to build a community. Unity through diversity strengthens our community. The Groton Republican Slate will restore fiscal responsibility to Groton's town operations, focusing on sustainable solutions that promote financial health and stability as opposed to one-off fixes that don't improve our fiscal position. We can do this by prioritizing business development, decreasing town expenses, and getting ahead of debt payments. Good government is an open government. Being committed to transparency and accountability, our slate will strive to work with everyone at the table. In fact, we want to invite more people to the table. Decisions and conversations must be available for public scrutiny. We need fresh faces with new ideas to reinvigorate our local economy and our community. Groton needs to have a sense of place in the world. Who are we? How do we connect to each other and to the outside world? The Groton Republican Slate wants to emphasize Groton's unique position and history to elevate our town as the hub of southeastern Connecticut. We believe that the town would benefit from having a Town Green, programs that incentivize people to spend in town, and smart development that protects our eclectic villages and suburban spaces while allowing for growth through creative planning. If you have any questions, I would love to hear from you. The entire Groton Republican Slate is dedicated to responding to our community. And please, remember to vote on November 5th.
Thank you, Sean Greeley and GMTV, for producing this special Meet the Candidate program. Hello, I'm Rachel Franco, one of your Groton Town councillors, and I'm running for reelection, and I'd like your support. I'm a lifelong resident of Groton. I've lived in Paquannic Bridge, Hyrock Trailer Park, Groton City, and now settled in Mystic. I graduated from Fitch High School. I have a husband, David, three sons, Jake, Jack, and Anthony, and my parents are Margie and Jim Gookins. I also have two chocolate labs, Bernie and Jorge. I volunteer with my husband's nonprofit CT Clipper Baseball Program for youth in our community. I received my degree in accounting from Three Rivers, and I work as a business manager at Norwich Family Dental Associates. I am an unflinching, analytical, and pragmatic businesswoman who fights on behalf of those who cannot. As my story illustrates, I am not a politician, but a resident who stepped up. I do my homework, and I research all issues with which I am presented. Now, I'd like to share a few notable achievements that I'm proud to have accomplished. I voted to widen and pave Thomas Road, a project that had been tangled in red tape for 30 years and would be for years to come. This saved the town hundreds of thousands of dollars, made the road safer for pedestrians, and introduced Groton's first bike path. I was instrumental in securing land for the new middle school when issues arose from a previous land swap agreement. I voted to approve the Groton Town Police Radio Communication System. Notably, Groton was the first town to go live on the state of Connecticut system, and it saved Groton taxpayers millions of dollars, as well as made Groton safer. I have always advocated for economic development in downtown Groton area. Via my liaison position on the Tax Incremental Financing Committee and the Economic Development Committee, I always pressed for the best and most worthwhile I always pressed for the best and most worthwhile economic development initiatives that would benefit and grow Grotton. Two years ago, I said I would work to sell excess of vacant school properties. I am extremely proud of the pending sale of Groton Heights School. After sitting empty for 12 long years, it is now under contract and slated to become an asset to our community. There are currently two other schools with bids that have been accepted and are going through the selection process. Our council is not just selling town property with the possibility of it remaining abandoned for years to come. We are being meticulous and requiring developers to show their finances and be fully committed prior to the property being signed over for sale. Furthermore, this council doubled Grotton's rainy day fund in two years, which is a substantial accomplishment, and we also kept taxes flat this year. In addition to what I've accomplished at council meetings, I have met with many residents and helped them with their issues in their neighborhoods. Although we have accomplished so much, there is still much work to be done, and I want to continue to work for you and grow Grotton. I have a vision and foresee a bright future where Grotton has a booming economy, where many will want to live, work, and play. Grotton is in a unique situation, which many towns in Connecticut are envious of. In addition to our empty schools being developed, Grotton has the expansion of Electric Boat's workforce and massive build-out. We're building three new schools. There is a proposed apartment complex on Route 184 and a newly signed sales agreement for a village development at the Mystic Oral School property. These will all bring a tremendous amount of new jobs, construction, and workers to our area, along with an influx of spending dollars and people. My emphasis will be on responsible economic development, increased sustainability initiatives, and planning Grotton's growth, all the while maintaining strong school system and properly educating our children, investing in infrastructure. Our roads, sidewalks, and bridges need attention. I want to continue to maintain and enhance our community services. I would also like to work with our emergency services so they can be prepared for Grotton's pending growth. Though to afford all this, we must bring in new tax dollars, and I anticipate the many new development initiatives I've mentioned and additional future developments will eventually help fill this need. I will act and prepare for the bright, robust future that is coming. In closing, it has been an exciting two years as a Town Councillor, and I have met many wonderful, amazing people who truly care about Grotton. My work is not finished. I am asking for your vote this November, and if I receive it, please know I will work just as hard for you in the future as I have in the last two years. Thank you so much, and vote November 5th.
Hello, Grotton. My name is Bruce Flax, and I'm running for a seat on the Grotton Town Council. My wife and I have lived here close to 25 years, and we have five children aged 10 to 22 who are all a product of the Grotton school system. I was on the council from 2008 to 2017, the last two years as the town mayor. As a councillor, you represent the entire town, all seven districts, including the subdivisions. As a representative of the people, a councillor needs to govern for the people. One of the major reasons I am running again is because the current council are not governing for the people. The Grotton Republican Town Council Slate is dedicated to putting people over politics. It has become all too common for elected officials to put partisan interests before the needs of our neighbors. The current council, under one-party rule of the Democrats, has obstructed transparency by caucusing behind closed doors and not in front of the town meeting cameras. They have reneged on contracts, just asked to know Ain't Garden Group. They have jeopardized Grotton's fiscal position by using fund balance to offset town budget increases, and they have put their party before the residents of Grotton by not challenging state party issues that affect town citizens like tolls. This cannot be allowed at the local level. Each of our candidates for the Republicans, including me, is committed to being independent leaders and voices and understand that it takes everybody to build up a vision, a village. Please consider adding party diversity to a very one-sided council. As with my first nine years on council, I promised to always do what I think is best for the town. I am sure we will not always agree. I promise to listen and understand when we do not agree. I also promise to continue to be respectful to everyone. I am fiscally responsible. I want to keep town and Board of Ed spending down, but not at the expense of quality of life in the town. I will look deep into the budgets of the town and the Board of Ed and try to find savings. The political makeup of the town, especially with the city of Grotton, can be confusing. I will continue to try to find savings everywhere, but let me be clear. I will be very supportive of the city government, and I will not support any suggestion to eliminate it. Please consider voting for me for these reasons. I do listen to both sides of an issue before making a decision. I believe communications is power, and I also believe in transparency of government. I continue to make sure citizens are informed. I started a Facebook page entitled Government Community Grotton. Please like it on Facebook, where every weekend I post the agendas of the Town Council, the City Council, the Board of Education, and RTM meetings for the upcoming week. I believe it's very important for the citizens to know what is going on. My decisions are made considering the entire tax base. I try to do what is best for the town as a whole, of all the citizens of the town, the city, and Grotton Long Point. I am very well acquainted with the budget process, and as such, I actively try to keep spending in order. This current council has increased town spending on average 5.3% per year, combining for close to a 1 mil increase in spending. My last two years as mayor, our council decreased town spending an average of 3.9%. The Grotton Republican team will restore fiscal responsibility to Grotton Town Operations, focusing on sustainable solutions that promote financial health and stability as opposed to one-off fixes that don't improve our fiscal position. We can do this by prioritizing business development, decreasing town expenses, investing resources, and getting ahead on debt payments. The local Democrat Party has and will attempt to nationalize a local election. This is disingenuous and takes the focus away from the local issues. They are attempting to deflect from the real issues. Please realize that the Republican team at this local Grotton level has the town's best interests at hand. I am Bruce Flax, and I am asking for your vote this Tuesday, November 5th. The Republican Party is on line B. I am at the end of the line, the ninth spot. Together, we can set Grotton on a path that is future-focused, fiscally responsible, and dedicated to the residents, not political parties. Thank you.